Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Let's call this meeting, this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order. Since it is right around 2:00 PM, we will start with our roll call. Mr. Clerk, to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Feimster.
Here.
Trustee Frankel.
Here.
Trustee Simon Holland.
I'm here.
Trustee Mayer.
My honor.
Trustee Raymond.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
I'm here.
And student representative Deutsch. We have a call.
Thank you, sir. We're going to have our pledge of allegiance and today our volunteer, quote unquote. Our volunteer is the newest addition of the senior leadership team, our chief academic officer, who was here in our midst. She has volunteered to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you once again and congratulations. Okay, we'll start with any public comment if we have any to start with, JJ, today?
John Epalito.
Mr. Epalito, welcome, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is John Epalito. I have three kids in the district and I'm the president of Protect Nevada Children. I would like to thank the one school board member that came to our student data mining meeting last week. In addition, there was one Nevada State Board of Education member present. We had progressives, moderates, and conservatives all in the same room. And the one thing that everybody seemed to agree on is that what is happening in regards to student data mining in Nevada schools is wrong. Edmodo is a free third-party education vendor product that's widely used in the district. The way Edmodo is paid is with student data. Edmodo's Terms of Service Agreement says that minors under 18 need parental approval before creating an account and sharing data with Edmodo. This is not happening in inclined schools. In Edmodo's privacy policy, they tell us they, quote, "have to" share our children's data with others. I do not want Edmodo or whomever they share student data with involved in my kid's education. Last month, Edmodo had a data breach that ZDNet called one of the biggest data breaches so far in 2017. Even if this current data breach does not negatively affect the children in Washoe County, it's just a matter of time before one does. Our local inclined schools and the district still haven't informed parents about the data breach. And to make matters worse, in some schools, like Incline High School, it's hard for students to get through all their classes without using Edmodo. It is the districts and the local schools that are pressuring kids to share personal data and schoolwork with Edmodo. But when there's a data breach like this occurs, everyone goes silent. I guess legally, you don't have to inform parents, but morally, you know you should. The district got the children into this. The least that you can do now is inform parents that there was a data breach. We at Protect Nevada Children would like to see parents educated on all aspects of one-to-one devices and third-party vendors prior to ever allowing their children to use a device or create an account with a third-party vendor. One current Nevada legislator, who is a Washoe County School District parent, who used to work at the Nevada Department of Ed, told us her daughter anonymously logs into the third-party education website she used for her schoolwork. Don't other parents deserve to know what she knows? I suspect if all parents knew what I know, they would not let, many would not let their children use one-to-one devices or create third-party accounts. The real question is, what will the district do to educate parents and let them make informed decisions on what's best for their family? And I have a two-sided handout. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epalito.
Liz Griffin.
Ms. Griffin? Welcome, ma'am. Right here, you have three minutes. Thank you for being here. We're going to help get that mic turned on for you. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Go right ahead. Yes, we can.
All right, okay. Well, before I start with my points, I'd like to be transparent and tell you, I'm here because I do oppose the Wild Creek proposition or the Wild Creek plans. Let me just say, though, my husband and I are not anti-education. We've educated seven children in the Washoe County School District. We've come to understand how hard that job is. We know how hard the teachers work. I myself began my education at the old Anderson School. So I go ways back with the Washoe County School District. We have the utmost respect. We want to emphasize that for what the school district does. It is the teachers, however, who make the difference. It's not the buildings. It's not the trappings. It's not the surroundings. There is a proposal, of course, to tear out Wild Creek and turn that into what I characterize, frankly, as a mega campus. I don't know how that was decided, but I want to bring up the fact that it is one of the few open green spaces we have. It's also a wildlife sanctuary. It is a golf course used by many people who cannot afford some of the other golf courses, including a couple of the high schools and Special Olympics. Once again, a building does not educate our children. It's the teachers who do it. From what we understand so far, this appears to be a very ambitious project. And the school district, well, of course, you know, not as a negative, but there's a deficit. We all see that. We all know it. Everybody knows that, which is problematic. A large campus, a large project of this size, is only going to add to that. Where are the impact studies? We know personally, we live next to the golf course, it's in a flood plain. We have pictures of the floods. We know it's also in a flight path. That's problematic. Any traffic studies done? We don't, we haven't heard or seen that any impact studies have been done whatsoever. We know there are going to be infrastructure problems. My question is, where is Plan B? In any business that you run, you have Plan A, and typically, if Plan A falls through, you've got Plan B. But I haven't seen a Plan B. We know that there are other parcels available throughout Washoe County that don't entail tearing out a public property. We'd like for you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Ms. Shue, did we get that right? I'm sorry, Chip? Oh, Shep. 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 Okay, we got it right, Ms. Shep. Welcome. Thank you for being here. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have been blessed with owning a home in the Point View subdivision on the west side of the Wild Creek Golf Course. A study of my neighborhood would show that the residents do believe in the importance of education, and it's proven by, I think, a higher-than-average level of personal education to people that live there. Placing a high school and a preschool on the Wild Creek property does not make sense. There isn't even a municipal bus line that comes out to Wild Creek. All of the proposed 2,500 students would have to either drive their own cars or depend on you, the Washoe County School System, to furnish their transportation. Everyone knows that it's a mistake to drive by a high school at lunch or when school lets out. It's a nightmare, even when there are traffic monitors. So how would that amount of foot traffic and student vehicles affect the traffic on North McCarran Boulevard? Are you thinking that they will all utilize Sullivan Lane, Wettekin, and El Rancho? None of those roads are even close to being large enough to be able to handle the additional traffic. For one thing, the strength of the roadbeds and asphalt would need to be redone to handle the constant flow of heavy school bus traffic. The Wild Creek Golf Course affords a cool, relaxing view for the commuters on North McCarran Boulevard. People cannot help themselves as they drive by. Their eyes are naturally drawn to that cool, green space. Aside from the more common animals, I've seen deer and even some very playful badgers that live there. Those animals all need a place to live. Your proposed school would ruin their homes and make it much more difficult for them to even continue to exist. That they should lose so much for the sake of a parking lot greatly upsets me. The reason for a golf course being so lush is that the groundskeepers apply lots of water. And don't forget, the years of herbicides that have been saturating the soils and will be part of their daily lives of the students who attend the school. I am very curious about the water. I haven't heard any figures telling what the value of those water rights is and who has and will have control of that water. Those are just a couple of my concerns. I have a whole list that includes the earthquake faults, the noise pollution, light pollution, flight patterns, and why you have not come up with other locations that could be less expensive to build on and safer for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shep.
Christina Thomas.
Ms. Thomas, welcome. Thank you for being here. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I was here two weeks ago when myself and a group of other people approached you guys about allowing the eagle feathers on the graduation caps. I first wanted to thank you guys, the board, for allowing the students for this school year to wear their feathers. We last night had a ceremony for the students at Reed High School, and for the students were blessed with their feathers that were said with our traditional prayers and our language from an elder in our community. And it was a really wonderful thing, and the students were really appreciative. And some of them got a little emotional because it was a really prominent time in their life and something that they're going to remember. So I just wanted to first thank you guys for that, for allowing that for this school year. My question, though, that I just wanted to come and see as far as where we stand with this, because as from what I understand, what you guys had sent out was just a guideline for this school year. And I just kind of wanted to see where we were at as far as making this a policy for future, so we don't have to come up here every school year and do this. So I just kind of wanted to see where we were at on that as well, because I know that there was some local media here that picked up the story. I'm sure you guys saw, as well as made in the Washington Post, a few other publications across the country, as well as ABC News. So it did get a lot of good comments, and if you guys ever read some of them, you know, you guys were given props for allowing the students, because there's so many school districts that aren't allowing their students to do so. So I just come before you guys to, you know, ask again if you guys are going to consult with the Native American communities, or you need further information, or where we stand on this point. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
I'm going to apologize right now. Kacholi? Kacholi? Kacholi, Fortunate Eagle Nordwell.
What would be the best way to refer to you?
Fortunate Eagle, now.
Fortunate Eagle? Well, welcome, Fortunate Eagle. Thank you for being here. You have three minutes, sir.
It's a pleasure, Dr. Taylor and Superintendent Davis. I came to speak today about the experience of last night. We at Reed High School, the four graduating seniors, well, we have five, but four Native American students were able to participate last night with the graduation ceremony for the eagle feathers. So what I wanted to basically touch base on is like the huge significance of this. So Native American students, you know, on the Reno Gazette, it kind of covered it lightly saying, you know, it's a very significant thing when any Native American is given any type of eagle feather. And for young men like ourselves that graduated from Reed High School, that are going to, it's a huge, significant moment in our lives to wear, now we can wear the feather at our graduation with pride and honor for our people. And like what Christina touched base on before, it's the whole entire thing of maintaining that for future generations. Because the whole incident kind of seemed a little disturbed, I guess, would be the best way of saying it. Because before, we were told at our school that it would not be allowed, because we understood that Washoe County did not want any type of profanity, any type of like random things on the calves, which we understood and respected. The issue is that they said that would have to go in our hair. And not every Native American student has long hair. So that's when we decided, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, they could wear theirs with pride. And for those with not hair, you know, where would they have it? So now that we have it for this year, what we want to do is make sure that it's maintained for future generations of students. Because the huge significance is not only for the students that are graduating this year, but for the, but for the next generations that will come after. Because Native students now, we see that they have like the lowest graduation rates in the whole entire country. So with the eagle feathers, this is a good way in kind of boosting morale for Native students, showing them, you know, we graduated, we made it this far, and you guys will too, and you guys can. You guys have to stay and commit to it. So ultimately, the huge thing that we're here for today is to ensure that the Washoe County School District, along with other districts here in northern Nevada and all Nevada, really, can kind of see that Washoe County has that role model of being, you know, we're going to take the initiative and make sure that these students have that honor to walk the graduation stage with pride. And, you know, later on down the line, or sooner, maybe we could see that expanded towards other cultures and traditions. Because the eagle feather, like I said, it's significant. It would be as, as a comparison, I guess the best way I could say is, if you had someone who is Christian and is religious, and if you told them that at graduation, you are not allowed to wear anything with a cross or anything Christian on it, that would be the same impact with the Native Americans. So we want to expand this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Fortunate Eagle.
Wesley Griffin.
Mr. Griffin, welcome, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Distinguished members of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, I'm Wesley Griffin, and I'm here to express my grave concerns about putting a high school on Wild Creek Golf Course. The issues that I have are probably, in fact, there are way too many to even begin to cover in three minutes, so maybe I'll be back. But before I get on with things, I would like to say, too, though, that in thinking about the School District Board of Trustees, I'm reminded of Theodore Roosevelt's speech, Citizenship in a Republic. And in that speech, I'm sure you've probably heard at some point what he describes as the man in the arena. Well, there's men and women in the arena, and I think you are some of those people. So thank you for your service. As I mentioned, there are so many issues involved with putting a high school on Washoe County, on Wild Creek Golf Course. That land was transferred, really, to the citizens of Washoe County in 1974. The original date was transferred. At that time, the public entity that was charged with maintaining and setting up that land was the Fair and Recreation Board. That Fair and Recreation Board later changed its mission to become the RSCBA, the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitor Authority. I think if, if they had been truly exercising integrity, they would have recognized that they were no longer looking out for the Washoe County citizens' recreation. That golf course has held three senior LPGA tournaments. There has been very little capital improvements put into that. It's kind of been rundown. It's let deteriorate. And now, we're going to sell it off to the county, and we're going to then exchange a property that is worth probably $30 million, according to golf experts, for a nine-hole golf course, which doesn't include a driving range, putting, green, a tee, not to mention some of the others. That is a wildlife sanctuary, as you've heard. I'll have to come back to express some of the other concerns. I would certainly appreciate your ear. We think this is a huge mistake. We want you to give ample consideration to what you do here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Paula Small.
Bless you. Is it Small?
Smale, like mail from the mailman?
Like Smale?
With S on it.
Okay, Smales.
Just.
Oh, Smale on the front. S on the front.
Yes.
Smale. Welcome. Thank you for being here, Ms. Smale.
Thank you. Okay. I am here to share thoughts on the Wild Creek project as well, and to urge you not to move forward on this project prematurely, lacking feasibility reports, research, subsequent exit examination, as well as public input. Know that I am for education. I am for the best learning environment possible to be had for our kids and our teachers. Know that I want our kids to be safe, and as such, I cannot be in alignment with the Wild Creek project as a new school site. It purposely puts our kids and teachers in harm's way regarding our growing international airport flight path, as well as it is a flood zone, which has dramatically and majorly flooded three times or more in the last 100 years. That being said, oh, we can engineer around the flooding problems. Well, we definitely do not have a good track record controlling our floodwaters. And it is no secret that there are underlying agendas around that Wild Creek site. And that alone, and that alone make, just reeks of the reality that the children's best interest is not in the forefront of this decision-making promise or process. So what could an alternative be? What about the New Tech School, brand-new, being built on Audi? We take that $130 million, build a New Tech School on Audi. The ground is stable there. The infrastructure is there. The traffic is way less than that on McCarran, and the cars are not traveling at 50 miles an hour plus with agitated drivers who have had bad days at work. The kids would have a place to go off-campus and sidewalks to walk on. Needless to say, Ben's Liquor Store won't be on the front doorstep of the school. Given that Washoe County wants to get out of the golf business, fine. Put somebody like Mike in, who turned Sierra Sage around, and revitalize the golf course. It is a $30 million-plus public asset. And then at that point, with the golf course back in shape, let's start promoting golf in the schools. We promote football, baseball, soccer to a very select few students who can actually participate. With golf, though, it's possible for virtually everyone to participate. It's an outdoor activity. It's a great exercise, relieve stress, and we know what our students are facing these days. It promotes social skills, conversational skills, personal integrity. It's an outdoor think tank. It's an outdoor boardroom, where critical thinking and problem-solving can be developed. So please, please, let's do due diligence and think this through. There are other sites that would not have water problems, mold problems, building stability problems, traffic problems, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smale. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Stacy Burns.
Oh, I wanted to see the baby.
Should I bring baby?
No, no. Welcome, Ms. Burns. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Burns, and I am the Reno Sparks Student Colony Language and Culture Coordinator. I'm, actually, I'm a trainee leave, but I'm here, because this is a very important issue for me and for our community. So I humbly come before each one of you. As a parent, I do have currently three children within the Washoe County School District, middle school, elementary, and of course, I have a couple more coming. And I also come before you as a student advocate and obviously as a concerned citizen. So I am here to support our Native students and their right to wear their eagle feathers for their graduation, as well as with the Beaded Mortar Board. So those that have tirelessly dedicated their adolescence to their academic careers, as you see, there's a couple here. Actually, there's three students from the Washoe County School District. We have a senior that's currently graduating. We have a junior who is very concerned with, at Spanish Springs, who would like to see that she gets to write next year, because she has been working tirelessly. And I, myself, as her mentor, I make sure that she sees that future, and that's something that she wants to attain, and that's a right that we have and we are giving her in our Native community. So all we would like is the support of the Washoe County School District. We also have one that's a Native student here that'll just be entering a high school. So she's looking forward to it, and, you know, hopefully, as my, as my daughter, I am able to give her that right and able to pass down our eagle feathers to her, and as she walks across the stage to get her graduation diploma. So I'm here for them mainly. I'm here for all those students and to have that right. So they have earned their right to wear their eagle feather for, not only for their families, but for their community. I, as well as everyone in the room, is all about empowering our students, not only our Native students, but all, all students. So I'm pretty sure everybody in this room is, that's what we're here for, is empowering our students and giving them the tools of success. In our Native American community, we have programs that partner with the Washoe County School District. They are dedicated to seeing our Native students succeed. So with the support of the Washoe County School District, and as well as our tireless efforts within the Washoe County School District with Reno Sparks Student Colony and with the other tribes, surrounding tribes, we would just love to see that support that's obviously that you can give to our students, as well as the support that we have tirelessly given to them as well. So I am here in support of our Native students, and I would love to see that for future generations, of which we have here. And they're here to stand up and also let you know that they want to be heard as well, and I'm here to speak for them. So thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Burns.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, JJ. No other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for all of you that took the time to come to share your thoughts and concerns with the, with the Board of Trustees. Next item on the agenda is an action to adopt the agenda. This is Agenda Item 1.05. One thing, I've just, we will adopt the agenda. It is at the request of staff that Agenda Item 3.20 be pulled at this time and considered at a later time. Agenda Item 3.20. Any other questions or concerns about the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion, if that's a pleasure of the board, to adopt the agenda as amended.
Move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Vice President Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. It's been moved to second in any discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Now we'll go on to board reports. As you know, we have a graduation at 6:00 PM, so I'm going to ask our colleagues here this to keep it very tight. And if we need a three-minute window, a three-minute public comment clock, JJ will be happy to start that for us, if necessary. But I know that there is a lot of great work that's going on around the district, and really appreciate that I'm not able to get out as I, as I usually do this year. But I know many of you, I know you're out there doing it and representing, and I appreciate that. We certainly want to make sure that we're able to fully support that graduation at 6:00 PM. So if you wouldn't mind keeping it tight, we can do that. And then it's very end of our board reports before superintendent's report. I'll do mine at that time, so. We'll start with Katie. This is your last meeting, so we will start with you.
I don't have anything to share about the student advisory board, but I do just want to say that I am very thankful that I've had this opportunity, and I've absolutely loved being able to serve on the board throughout this past year and being the chair of the student advisory board. So thank you.
You have done a tremendous job, Katie. And then there's a part two?
So we do have a new student representative for next year, and that's Alex Chacon from Demone Ranch High School.
Say the, say the name again.
Alex Chacon.
Alex, okay. Fantastic. All right, from Demone Ranch. Great. Well, you've done a great job representing the students, 64, 65,000 students. So it's been a pleasure to have you on our team. Trustee Frankel.
I'll be very brief. One thing I just want to mention was participating as a panelist on the TMCC High School Senior Exit Presentations, which I've done now three years in a row. And it was a tremendous opportunity to hear from four incredible students. All of them are amazing, including a neuroscientist, someone who wants to go on and change the environmental world of the future. And then a third, who actually, many of us heard speak at the TMCC High School graduation, Imani Akala. And I wanted to mention her only because she is a writer, and she wants to be a screenwriter, and she has written many books, three of which are online. So I want everybody here, I told her I would, I would spread the word about, she said she has 500 hits on her site where she has books, including books of poetry. So I wanted to say her name, Imani Akala. Everybody here, I want everybody to check out her books, because they are amazing, and she's a young writer in the future, and I just wanted to share that and toot her horn, as well as the work of TMCC High School and all of the seniors who participated in the presentation.
Thank you, Trustee Frankel. I'm going to ask for that, so I can get it in writing and check that out. Thank you. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Just three quick things. I also participated as a panelist for the senior exit presentations at TMCC, and I am definitely signed up for next year. That was a wonderful experience and just so proud to see our graduates, 43 of whom not only got a high school diploma, but also got an associate's degree, and very, very impressive. impressive. Second, along with Trustee Raymond and Trustee Mayor, attended the Washoe Education Association Awards Banquet, and that was quite moving to see all of those awards. And then yesterday, I took a tour of communities and schools at Hug High School, which was very impressive. And I have been talking with legal counsel about how we can have staff correct things that are said, or to clarify things that are said in public comment. So I would ask the Superintendent in her report to share with us what the eagle feather policy is so that people can hear what it is on the record. Thank you.
That was very appropriate after the emails, asking about that. Thank you, thank you, Vice President Holland. Clerk Kelly.
In the interest of time, I'll pass, but I do want to let my colleagues know that today is Legal Counsel Neil Rombardo's birthday. And so since he's a year older, just to remind everyone to speak a little louder for my line.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Clerk Kelly.
Loud and slow.
Thank you so much. Trustee Raymond.
Well, I'll just do a quick update on one event I attended that was particularly noteworthy, I guess. I went to Roger Corbett last week for the Woo Bets last mentoring session, and it was so cool. So it was Worcester High School, freshmen through seniors walked across the street and sat with third graders and worked on, this time around, they worked on a math project. You know, the teachers basically just sort of stepped back, and you don't, they don't hardly even interact with the Worcester kids. They're really just focused on letting that mentoring happen naturally, and it was so incredible. And the Principal Dufresne, I think is that, yeah, she pointed out too, that really it came from the teachers on both ends. It wasn't, you know, her idea, it was just the Worcester teachers talking with the Roger Corbett teachers and coming up with this. So they've talked about plans for expansion in the future, and it was really awesome to see it, so.
Thank you, Trustee Raymond. Trustee Mayor.
I'll pass so that we can get to graduation, but I gotta say, Neil doesn't look a day older than he did yesterday, or older than 50.
On the record, too.
Thank God I got that beat.
Thank you, Trustee Mayor. Dr. Feenster.
I'll say this really quickly. I am the Board Member who attended the Protect Nevada Children's Meeting, and it was very informative, and I really appreciate the camaraderie that existed between the different ideals that the people presented, or came to the setting with. It was very interesting, and I did, I do want you to know that I did speak with the President separately, President Taylor, and mentioned a few words to Superintendent. So I just want you to know that we are listening, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Feenster. Really, for my report, just very, very basic, I mean, going to graduation was great. Just want to really acknowledge, as I fight through, I know many of you are doing the same, Trustee Holland with your hip surgery and just plugging along and making it happen, and even if that means a cane or a walker. You know, Dr. Feenster, walking pneumonia, this, many of you I know are dealing with things of your own. So yes, I just thank you because the Board is still present and able to be involved even without my being there, because you are carrying that load, and that really just means a lot. Because it's important, what we do in this district is certainly important. So I feel very, very well supported in that we're doing those great things. And so I just wanted to make sure, I go on the record, to thank you, thank each of you for doing that. And then we have a very important point of business. Katie, please come on up here, would you may I? This is your last meeting, as we said. You have done an amazing job with the Student Advisory Board. I mean, I remember when you weren't, you weren't the Chair, you were on the Board, you were very, very involved, very, very engaged, shared your ideas. One of the things I love about you is you think differently, and you don't mind sharing when you think differently. You're very respectful, you know, in it, but you will say when you disagree, and you will give it a different perspective, and that, no, that's not a good thing, that's a great thing. That's a great thing, and that's why you were able to add so much to this board. I love the way we kind of, I knew when you wanted to comment because you kind of lean in, we kind of had that I thing, but we needed to hear from you, your perspective, from your perspective, and that of the students. So really, I'm sure I speak for all of us, and we have gained tremendously from your insight, from your challenges, from your questions. You've helped to make us a better Board and help us to make better decisions. We wish nothing but tremendous continued, not just success, you've already had that, but continued success. There's so many great things that hit you, Katie, so thank you for sharing you with us. So we have a little something for you, a little gavel on it. Little gavel. Katie Doach, TMCC High School, Student Representative of the Board, to the Board of Trustees, 2016-17, and now you have a gold gavel of your own. Katie, thank you.
That's a bad man craft. Go to the bad man.
That's why she's a bad man. You have set the bar high for Alex coming in next year, Katie. Okay, that's it for us. Superintendent Davis.
Yes, I'm going to be quick. It's graduation season, and we're so excited. We kicked off with TMCC, and tonight, we have Pacolo, which is one of our favorites also, and tends to make John Mayer cry. I'm glad he brought his handkerchief. Grateful to the Governor and the Legislature for their hard work this session and the bipartisan effort. On behalf of all Nevada's children, we are very thankful. And Trustee Simon, you did ask me to address something in my Board Report, which I am going to leave that to the team because there's a grab report that already has that information that was going to be provided. However, what they don't know is that we had our community luncheon that we always have bi-monthly. I have a community luncheon. San Sam from the Reno Sparks Native American Community met with me and was very grateful about the work that was done, and shared that they were happy with the decisions to inform. So I do believe that the work is done. And they didn't, that's not in your report, sorry, because you weren't at my community meeting. So I think that those issues were resolved, but we're going to talk about a few things, and I'll leave that to them because it's already in our report. Now I don't want to take away their thunder.
Any other report from you?
It's graduation. Oh, well, is Lindsay in here?
She's coming, she's coming.
Lindsay's coming, but I can't wait till she gets up. It's been a long road, and I think we stopped texting at 1:00 and started back texting at 5:00. But just a thank you for Lindsay during the last 72 hours.
Yeah, that's certainly, certainly, certainly coming. I'm surprised you have your eyes open at this point, Lindsay. We are going to, thank you for everyone, for all that continued, continued hard work. We're on to Agenda Item 3.01. This is approval of the consent agenda. And just as a reminder, Consent Agenda Item 3.20 was pulled. Before we consider the consent agenda, there is public comment that we're going to have at this time, and then we'll see what the pleasure of the Board is. JJ?
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome, sir.
Thank you, John Appolito, for the record, President of Protect Nevada Children. Item 3.04, I noticed in there there was talk about bullying of students and teachers. I guess there's no bullying about a parent, because that is happening in incline. There was an anonymous petition. Maybe 100 people signed it, maybe one person signed it 100 times, because we don't know, it's anonymous. But people basically bullying me over something that happened a while back that Tracy Davis started. But thank you very much. Hopefully, we can get to the bottom of that someday. 3.05, Social and Emotional Assessments. The DESSA and the SEL Web, those are psychological assessments. They are being given in Washoe County schools, you guys have said that. We have four questions that still have not been answered on that. Will parents be notified before the psychological assessments are given to their kids? Can parents opt out? Who will have access to the psychological profiles? And how will the profiles affect our children's future? We deserve answers to those questions. Some of the, we've been asking these questions for coming up on two months now, and I noticed that's part of what's in this 3.05. And 3.07, the Conservation and Environmental Education. All that's great, and it's probably a good curriculum, it's probably fine. What is frustrating is that we don't have time to teach cursive anymore. We barely have time to teach keyboarding, but we've got time for conservation and environmental education. How about cursive and keyboarding? That's what's important. Here is a possible petition signed by 100 anonymous people against one person who's making everything public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Superintendent Davis?
Just for reference, I am not aware of what Mr. Appolito is talking about, a petition that was created that I was a part of. I was not a part of a petition by any parents from Incline Village.
Okay, thank you.
Can I reply?
No, sir. Thank you.
I thought once somebody said something, then the person making the comments could reply.
No, sir. Thank you so much.
It's from the secret meeting back at the beginning of the year.
Mr. Appolito, you're not on the record. Mr. Appolito, you're not on the record. We'll take this back to the Board. Again, this is consideration of the consent agenda. Reminder that Agenda, Consent Agenda Item 3.20 has been pulled. Looking for any pleasure from the Board and any other consent agenda items. Vice President Holland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for a couple of points I wanted to make on Items 3.04 to 3.07, I just wanted staff to confirm for the record that no other public comments were received during the 15-day notice period.
On those policies?
Yes.
Ms. Curry?
That's correct.
Would you mind? You know.
Sorry, Lisa Curry, the Policy Quarter, and that is correct. There were, these were pretty straightforward policies, there weren't any comments.
Thank you, Lisa. And then on Items 3.17 to 3.25, I had asked if in the future we could have staff reports note the engineer's estimate or the project budget, and staff did say that in the future they would note project budgets for those items. So I just wanted to thank the staff for that, because I think it's really helpful to us. It's a best practice, in my mind, to add that project budget information, to make it available to the public, and to increase our accountability and transparency on that. And it also is an early warning system for us all as well. If we're seeing those awards of bids go significantly over our project budgets, we need to, we need to be aware of that. So I appreciated the staff's comment on that.
Let me jump in, just on that, just for clarity, excuse my interruption. So then what we're looking for really is, because what we really have here is the bid, we're looking for the bid in addition to our budget for that.
In the future.
Okay, for future, okay.
Don't need to do it now, but I just wanted to thank the staff for the willingness to do that.
Yeah, I saw that email, I just wanted the clarity.
Thank you.
That's good.
And then on Items 3.26, 3.29, and 3.31, I just wondered if any of the applicants or proposed appointees were here, and if they wanted to say anything.
So why don't, as we're going through this, so we have any of the members that will be appointed to the Family Resource Centers? Any of them able to make it here on today? We'd like to just thank you and acknowledge you. We do, we do?
No.
No, no, okay, you're doing this, yes, okay, yeah. No, all right. So which, there was 3.26, and then?
2.9.
2.9 and 3.1, right? Let's see. Student Attendance Advisory Committee members, new appointees, anyone able to make it today? No, we thank you for your service as well. And then, Mr. Kate. Not able to be here, but nonetheless.
And Stata.
Did I, oh, other page, other page, other page, other page. This is for the Capital Funding Protection Committee. In any event, for each of those three committees, we really can't do the work that we do without the help of those that volunteer. I do think it's a good practice to make sure that we pull that out, and we keep going around that, to really acknowledge those that are willing to come forward and help us serve in those capacities. So thank you, Vice President Holland, and thank you for all of those who are willing to serve. Any other, any other pleasure from the Board on the consent agenda? Trustee Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion, but before I do, I'd like to duplicate my request of all the questions that she's asked, and they've written answers to be included within the minutes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good information.
I move for approval of all the consent items, with the exception of 3.20, which was pulled.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, has it been moved in second? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you for that comment about those, the responses to those questions. Okay, we're going to move on to Lindsay is here. And I'm just going to start by saying yay! Absolutely, let's give Lindsay, truly, let's give Lindsay a Lindsay. I know it's the work that you do, but truly, truly, I don't know if it was just more obvious this time, you know, or what, but just a lot of tremendous work led by you, and I know some of the people around the table were able to get involved, lend support, whatever, made themselves available for whatever was necessary. So certainly, thank you for all those efforts into the team, but you're a leader down there. You're a leader down there, and I'm just really proud to have had you accomplish the things that you did. So welcome. Hopefully, you're going to get some sleep soon, maybe even last night, but thank you for being here. Lindsay, our Legislative Report.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I'm sorry, yes, Trustee Mayor?
I have a question just.
Only if you turn your mic on.
Because Mr. Appolito brought up a thing about cursive writing, and I know that there was a bill before the Legislature. Did that get approved?
No, it did not.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Thank you for the kind words, but it really is a team effort. Superintendent Davis, anytime I needed her, was down there, probably against her will sometimes, but, and last-minute notice, but it's a team effort. I can only do what I do when I'm supported and given the information by the amazing team that you have here. So I appreciate your kind words, but I would really like to deflect that to the people sitting behind me that made it easy for me. And it really did just end at midnight, and so I wish I had something more complete to give you, but I'm just going to kind of give you a short overview of some of the highlights. And then at your next meeting on June 27th, I'll have a much more complete overview of kind of bill-by-bill. Just procedurally, a reminder that even bills that were passed last night have, go to the Governor, and he has 10 days whether to sign them or not. So, you know, we don't like to count our chickens before they hatch, or eggs before they, or chickens, or whatever that means. But we're still not sure on some of these things. So by the time we come back at the end of June, we'll know for sure which things were actually approved and which things were not. So, and just to kind of organize my comments a little bit, I just, I'm going to be referencing our Legislative Platform. That's the document that guides the work that I do. And so I'm just going to really briefly go through some of these bullets and give you an idea of some of the things that happened. Obviously, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the discussion around operating funds, but at about 11:56 last night, the procedural process of approving Senate Bill 550, which included an additional $5 million appropriation to the Washoe County School District, was approved. And so again, that will be sent to the Governor for his signature. But that was in response to the situation that came to light when the budget bill was introduced. The second bullet, and I, I'm not going to go through every single bullet, I promise, I know you're busy, but just, there are some really exciting things. The second one specifically references the weighted student funding formula that you may have heard of, that better acknowledges, $72 million was put into that over the biennium to provide additional resources to our, the students in the lowest 25 percentile that are either EL or FRL, live students in poverty, and at one- and two-star schools, and to the extent possible, three-star schools, depending on how far those funds will go. That was a big step in the right direction. We've been studying weighted funding formulas since 2013, so to see that actually codified and funded was a big step for education in Nevada. The next one I'll talk about is Senate Bill 49 under Special Education. That was the bill that you elected to sponsor. And again, really happy that last night, about 10 o'clock, that bill was also approved by both the Assembly and concurred in the Senate. And so that bill, your bill, will be headed to the Governor for his signature. It's a little bit different than the bill that we originally sponsored. We came to some compromise language that basically acknowledges that we'll get the full weight for special education students up to the 13% cap, and then students over the 13% cap will receive half of that additional weight. So still acknowledging that all students with special needs should get some additional contribution, but to the extent that money was available, we had to have a little bit but to the extent that money was available, we had to have a little bit of money moved around in order to cover that cost to the state. So some compromise language there, but I still think you should be really proud of that legislation. Sends a really strong message about our willingness and our dedication to serve all of our special needs students. Under college and career readiness, I think the Assembly Bill 7 was approved, and that requires the State Board of Education to do a lot of work coming up. So not a whole lot of details in that bill, but it will require them to reconsider what diploma options are available to our high school students, and also what the end-of-course testing will look like for our high school students and whether or not we should move to more of a medium-stakes test instead of that high-stakes test. So unlike lots of other legislation that tells you this is what it's going to look like, this one basically bumped it to the State Board of Education for their consideration. So that, I think, will be some really heavy lifting for your team to make sure that they get that right and that that works for all of our students. In terms of human capital, I would say the highlight there is Assembly Bill 320. That was a compromise, the quintessential term of compromise legislation around teacher evaluations and removing the state test scores as part of teacher evaluations. And certainly, Trustee Frankel and her involvement in the Teachers and Leaders Council could probably spend hours, as could I, and bore you to tears about the negotiations around teacher evaluations. But I think it was a good piece of legislation to move that conversation forward and give more local control, if nothing else, into what our teacher evaluation system looks like. And a perfect segue into local control, there were a couple bills being considered, I would say, that would take away some of that local control. And for the most part, and again, I'll have to kind of go back and double-check what happened in the 11th hour, but for the most part, nothing that would take away a lot of your ability to control the schools that you were elected to represent was taken away. So I think that's a win on behalf of the local control of our school boards. Lots of school safety bills, specific school safety, including the additional allocation or the continuation of the Social Workers in Schools grant that was started in the 2015 session to address school safety, some modifications to the bullying law, and some changes to the way that we will do drills for school safety. School choice, I'll let you read about that in the newspaper more, but an additional appropriation to the existing Opportunity Scholarships program that are available for our students, some charter school legislation. And then in terms of school construction funding, another sort of moment of high drama late last night, the approval of the bill that will extend the Construction Manager at Risk opportunity for our school district as we move forward in building schools over the next few years. So that's exciting because that was really important to us at the very end. So I'll leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions. I'm kind of in bill number mode, so if you have one in your mind, ask me, because I'm going to start filing those away into a place I can't remember them anymore. But I'll come back at the end of June and try to give you a more complete picture, more probably on the academic side of some of the things that were changed there.
Trustee Frankel?
Thank you, President Taylor, and thank you, Lindsey, for this great work and this list. And one of the things you mentioned, the second bullet you mentioned, was the weighted student funding formula for the lowest 25% of students who are EL or FRL. And I just wanted to clarify, that is for the students that are not currently in the Zoom or Victory schools. Is that correct?
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of qualifiers on who counts in there, and I left that one out, but you're right, excluding students who are in current Zoom and Victory schools, but other one or two and maybe three-star schools.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments for Ms. Anderson? Trustee Mayor?
I just have a comment. Personally, I'd like to thank you for all you do and everything. And I know your father well, and I'm sure that he is very proud of you, but you are well-respected around the community and just do a fantastic job. And congratulations on the hard work. It paid off in the long, long, long run. And remember, you're saying 120 days. Thank heavens for 121.
Certainly, thank you. Now, our job from here, then, is to direct the superintendent to put an action plan in place, because those new pieces of legislation, of course, require us as a school district to respond and to put some plans in place so we can begin to, I don't know, comply with the law, something that I'm thinking is kind of important to us as a board. So if that is the pleasure of the board, I will entertain the motion at this time.
I move that the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to develop an action plan of approved legislations from the 2017 Nevada Legislative Session.
Thank you, Trustee Frankel. Is there a second? Has it been moved and seconded? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show that we unanimously agree it is important to comply with the law. Thank you again, Ms. Anderson. Tremendous work, tremendous work, tremendous work. Okay, on to Agenda Item 5.01. These are our presentation items, Agenda Items 5. 5.01 is our presentation and discussion on the action to revoke the commitment of community education classes, class student fees for providing community education classes and associated services, and transfer the remaining fund balance in that account to a particular fund. And before us is our CFO, Mr. Tom Szysinski, and I believe Gail, our controller, is with him as well. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. Again, Tom Szysinski for the record, Chief Financial Officer, and with me is our controller. And I know you're rushed for time, so I'm going to just turn the floor over to Gail, and she'll walk you through this procedural item so that we can move on. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the board, Gail Carson, Controller. This particular item has to do with the fund balance remaining in the Community Education Fund or Fund 81. About four years ago, we dedicated, or we committed, excuse me, those student fees to the purpose of conducting community education classes. Effective July 1 of 2015, we stopped conducting community education classes, turned those over to TMCC. And so in order to close that fund and transfer those monies into the general fund, we just need to basically revoke that commitment of the revenue stream.
And with that, we'll entertain any questions.
I was going to say, that's pretty straightforward. It's just over $39,000, as we can see from the staff report. Any questions, comments, Trustee Mayor? Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay, seen, and all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. And then let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and we'll go right on slides, the same suspects in front of us. This is our public hearing on Board Resolution 17-007 with us authorizing medium-term obligations for the purpose of acquiring school buses and other support vehicles for the district, and then directing the controller, Ms. Carson, to forward materials to the Department of Taxation of the state of Nevada, and also providing the effective date of the resolution. This is for possible action. We'll turn it over to Mr. Szysinski, and then we will open our public hearing on Board Resolution 17-117.
Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. Again, Tom Szysinski, Chief Financial Officer, and Gail Carson, our Controller. This is a $3.1 million financing arrangement. And again, for the expediency of time, I'll turn it over to Gail to walk you through the details.
Thank you very much. This is a program that we've had in place since 1993, as far as the school buses go, and it's just a systematic program that we've used to replace our buses to ensure that our students are safe. Last year, I'm sorry, two years ago, we added in replacement of the white fleet vehicles. We added about $1 million to that. So overall, we have $2.9 million budget for buses and $1 million for white fleet. In FY17, we did not purchase any buses or vehicles under this program due to budget constraints. So this particular one is going to basically take half of the budget from FY17 and half of the budget from FY18 to get us back on track. With this $3.1 million that we propose to finance, we are looking to purchase 20 school buses and up to 27 school police vehicles and regular vehicles, white fleet vehicles. There's about seven school police vehicles included in that number. Of course, it'll change based on how the final bids come in. But that's what we're looking to do with this. This is a public hearing, and once we're done with this, then we can move forward. Do you have any questions?
Okay, what we will do at this time is make sure that we're clear that the public meeting is now open on Board Resolution 17-117. And this will be a time, if there's any public comment on this, seeing no public comment, any questions or discussion from the board on this item? Okay, seeing none, then we will close the public hearing at this time. And if it is the pleasure of the board, I will entertain the motion.
Madam President, I would move that the Board of Trustees approves Board Resolution 17-007, authorizing the issuance of up to $3.1 million of medium-term obligations to finance the unpaid costs from the general fund for the purchase of buses and district support vehicles.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seen, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And any opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you so much. Now we're on to Agenda Item 5.03. This is presentation and discussion on possible changes to the group insurance health rates and/or benefits for upcoming plan year, plan year 2018. This is based upon the rate analysis. This is just information for us, discussion only. And this will bring some of our newer board members up to speed a little bit, because this is going back to something that actually started last year. And then before us is our chief HR officer, Ms. Huckabee, and Ms. James, our risk manager. Floor is yours, ladies. Welcome back.
Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. I'm Dawn Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer. Last August, the Board of Trustees approved changes to our health, group health insurance plan, including rate increase and benefit changes. At that time, the board requested staff to come back before the end of the school year to provide an update on what the rates are looking like. That's why we have Jackie James, our risk manager, here. I'll let her take the floor. I do want to mention a couple of things right up front, and that is that this is preliminary analysis. We only have four months' worth of information at this point in which to provide you today, and those changes can change over time. And also let you know that this will be a series of sessions with our group health insurance committee prior to coming to the board. So we have meetings scheduled in June and two in July, and then we're scheduled to come back to the board in August. Good afternoon. As Dawn had stated, these are very preliminary rates that we're looking at. We're looking at just the first four months of 2017. So far, knock on wood, I think things have been going pretty good. We started out the year with our insurance trust fund balance of being a little over $8.4 million, and as of the end of April, we're up to $13.3 million. So I'm really excited on the course that we're going, but we're not where we need to be. We need to have between $16 and $17 million in the bank or in our trust fund to have those three months' worth of payments on hand for us. So what we're looking at when we ran the preliminary rates, and again, we're just dealing with the first four months of this year, is we're looking at about a 6.14% rate increase for 2018. We're hoping that as we move forward, when we have those bad months in 2016 drop off, and if we continue to have good months in 2017, it is really the hope that these rates are going to go down and that we would be looking at less than the 6.14%. But with the end of school near us, we wanted to make sure that this information got out to staff prior to them going home for the summer break, as well as there was a notification in the superintendent's minutes last Friday. We will also be posting this on the risk management website, and we will send an email out to staff after this meeting, also just giving them the update, just so everyone has this information prior to coming back at the beginning of school. We know everyone's in the start-of-school-year mode, and sometimes this information, on top of everything else that they're dealing with, kind of gets lost in the shuffle. We're hoping to bring back the final recommendation from the insurance committee to the Board of Trustees in the beginning of August, so it will be right around that start of school year. So we wanted to make sure that we got this information out as soon as possible. But just to remind everyone, too, that we currently have three plans. We have the EPO, the PPO, and the high deductible. On the high deductible, we had approximately 485 members sign up, so I think that that has done really well for us, and I think that's reflected in the numbers. But going forward, we will know more, but we just wanted to bring this to you early. Is there any questions?
I don't know if there are questions, but one of the things I just want to say that I appreciate is you're being very thoughtful, getting on the forefront of this and before the end of the school year, because it's always, you know, it's always disconcerting a little bit when things go up, prices go up and things change. So I think the more notice we have for employees, the more information, you know, that they have, the more of an opportunity that they have even to weigh in and share concerns, because we know there will be concerns. I think it's helpful. It gives us more time than, you know, than we've had. I know a lot of things were happening. So I just want to say I thank you for being on the front end of it and making sure that that information's there and that it's getting out. And then just making sure, you guys know this, the insurance committee meetings in the summertime, and people know about them. You know, we know they're public meetings, so that they know about them, so that employee groups that may be concerned, we know we had a lot of concerns last year, they had that opportunity to go to the meeting and share those concerns. So at least we know everyone has had that voice, and we have a chance to hear that voice. So thank you for doing that hard work this year for that. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Trustee Kelly?
Just a quick question, maybe for my own benefit. Can you tell me, what are some of the reasons for all these having to go up the 6%? Just, you know, what are some of the market reasons or other reasons for that?
Well, part of the reason is the claims experience that we had in 2016. So as we're moving forward, because this is very preliminary, and again, it's only a few months' worth of data. So we're only looking at four months' worth of data in 2017, and we're looking at the tail end of 2016 to give us that year. And the tail end of 2016 wasn't so good for us. So as we're going through and we're dropping off those harder months where we had those large claims, we're hoping to see that experience go down for us. But also, the increase in health insurance costs alone, there's a 7% to 8% regional trend increase, so we're looking at that as well. But we're hoping with our new pharmacy contract that we're in this year, and with some of the other changes that were implemented, we're hoping that it's going to end well for us.
Does that answer that question for you, Trustee Kelly? Thank you. Other questions or comments from Ms. Huckabee or Ms. James while they're here? Okay, yes, please. Dr. Feenster?
Jackie, I was wondering, you mentioned that teachers were going to be informed via the superintendent's message and?
There was a notification in the superintendent's minutes last Friday about the presentation today and this information, so that they have that, and they knew that this was going to be presented today. We are also going to post something on the risk management website, just about what the preliminary numbers are, and send an email out to all staff before they leave for the summer break.
Okay. I was just thinking, I was just thinking that maybe sending a letter to their home also, because I know how this gets lost, and everyone will say, I did not get the information. And I think just to, you know, the additional step of sending it home, because sometimes people, at the end of the school year, I could assure you, they're just not interested in an email or the superintendent's corner, or not in the corner, or whatever. They're just not interested. They're interested in getting out. And I think if we add a letter, I just, I don't know if it takes up time, but I know it will definitely add to the communication piece. And I think that's so important because it beats getting all the phone calls, you know, why didn't we know? And that's exactly what we're going to hear, and I think Mr. Mayor could back it up. But an additional letter, I don't know if it's costly, but I think it's worth the time. That's just something I'd like to add.
We could definitely do that. We could send that out. And I would just like to remind everyone that the 6%, the insurance committee hasn't even started looking at what that's going to look like and what the recommendation is going to be coming to the board, as far as, is it all-in rates, is it benefit changes? Those conversations have not even begun. We will probably start those the end of June at the next meeting. So I don't want staff to be panicked and thinking it's automatically going to go up 6% is going to be the rate increase, because those conversations haven't even begun yet.
Thank you, Dr. Feenster. Other questions, comments? Okay, well, thank you for your work. Thank you for giving the information out, and we know there's more to come.
Thank you.
There's more to come. Next on the agenda is an item we're going to reorder. It's Agenda Item 5.04, the evaluation, the possible action evaluation of Ms. Paula Ward, who is our chief internal auditor. We have a member of the audit committee who's going to be a part of that, and will not be here until 4:00 PM. And so we're going to hear the graduation presentation. So we'll have Agenda Item 5.05 instead. This is our presentation and discussion on the graduation process for the Washoe County School District Class of 2017. And this should include that information on the eagle feather, as mentioned previously by Vice President Holland, and the other information as requested by Clerk Kelly at our last meeting. So thank you for being here, and there's a graduate at the door.
There is.
Where's the music? Oh, oh, hey! Sorry, JJ. Sorry, JJ.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, who will be back momentarily, members of the Board. So we have a very exciting presentation for you this afternoon. As you know, this is a very special time of year for our students, our teachers, our staff, and their families. Every year, and I'm going to introduce a very special person to my right, I have a special person to my left, too, but you all know him a lot. This is Vanji Russell, our project manager for our chief of staff. And for many, many years, Vanji has been responsible for planning, organizing, and making sure that our graduation ceremonies go off without a hitch. And when we talk about all of the amount of logistics that goes into these extremely important ceremonies, Vanji takes this very, very personally. She takes it from the student perspective, she takes it from the parents' perspective, she takes it from the staff perspective. So Vanji's going to be here as far as to provide some additional information. But what we'd like to do is, so you all, when you come into the graduation ceremony, as trustees, you will be able to...
Get past it. Sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, there we go. You all will be sitting on stage. We've already done one graduation, the TMCC. We have just a few more to go.
Just fourteen.
Just a few. It's all exciting, and you never, ever will get tired of hearing pomp and circumstance. Every single time that you hear that song, you will remember it. But you will receive, for each one of the ceremonies, you will receive a graduation program. And that graduation program is very formatted. There's a certain format, and again, Mrs. Russell is very particular as far as what goes inside that program, because we want to make sure that it's standardized, because there are certain requirements that have to go within that graduation program. We also wanted to touch base as far as what the principals receive every single year. So we send out, from Vanji's office, there are very particular guidelines that have to go in, so that we make sure that the principals understand and their staff understands what the requirements are for graduation. So around March, Vanji will send out what those guidelines look like. At the very beginning of the year, they start to plan what the schedules are, and so there's a very particular schedule for each one of our graduation ceremonies. There's a practice schedule, and they have to show up at a certain particular time. We have two venues. We use Laller Event Center for the majority of our graduations. Obviously, we have Incline. We've also used GSR, which you all know, for TMCC. And then tonight, we'll be at Pacolo for our graduation. So there are multiple venues, with the major one being the Laller Event Center. Is there anything you want to talk about for the scheduling?
I gave them a pass.
Okay.
So they each have a packet.
Okay.
Yeah, David Lasik, chief of staff, for the record. So in each of your packets, you'll have the schedule of events as prepared by Ms. Russell for each of the graduations, who said they would attend, there's parking information. And then finally, I want to draw your attention to the very last page of your packet, which Deputy Superintendent McNeil had a letter sent out to all of the high schools. And this is really talking about the student attire and the eagle feathers. So the very last part, we worked with the Equity and Diversity Department and drafted language specific to the eagle feather to clear up any misconception that was out there. We've always allowed them. So I think there was some misinformation out there, so this was our attempt to put this out to families, that we put this out to the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, and then also to all the high school principals and staff.
Yes, Vice President Holland.
David, could you just read those two paragraphs into the record, so everybody knows what they say?
It's good language, so thank you for suggesting that. "The right to wear eagle feathers is guaranteed under the American Indian Religious Freedom Act. It is considered to be a mark of academic distinction. Tribal members are exempted from the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act of 1962 and are allowed to include eagle parts in their religious ceremonies. Many tribes present their young people with eagle feathers upon graduation from high school to signify the achievement of this important educational journey and the honor the graduate brings to his or her family, community, and tribal nation. For many Native students, receiving an eagle feather in recognition of graduation is as significant as earning a diploma or akin to an honor society stole. Eagle feathers may be worn by graduating students either from their hair or hung from their graduation cap." And I think this was the confusing part that some of the students talked about. However, graduation caps may still not be decorated, modified, or otherwise altered, including beading, and that's just consistent across the board, so people don't write and decorate and light up their caps.
And just for the record, that is the policy, not just this year, but going forward.
Right. So we actually do have a draft, and it's an administrative regulation, 5128. And out of my office, I wanted to put that on hold, because we do have a lot of changes, as Lindsay was just talking about, as far as graduation requirements. And within this regulation is where that will be sitting. So it's a rather lengthy regulation, but it will be within the regulation. But we didn't want to put forth a regulation if there were going to be changes to end, of course, assessments and graduation requirements.
I think the key thing is making sure that it's known that this isn't something that's a one-year, because clearly, based upon the public comment, that was the indication they had the information. It was just something that was done for one year, when in fact, this has been in place. It's required by federal law. And so our being able to go forward, and in the future, them knowing that it's already there, they don't have to come and ask for a special consideration, because it's already provided for in the regulation.
Correct. And once the admin regulation is signed by Superintendent Davis, we'll be more than happy to share a copy of that, as well as the schools will receive this memo every single year, as far as what's in there.
Good. And that'll be that great reminder, so hopefully hit that off at the pass next time, right? Trustee Franklin?
And I think this is great, and I appreciate the clarification. I also think it is great that it's going out to the schools every year, and I think clearly there was a breakdown in communication with the public, or certain groups in the public, about what the fact that this was our process and our regulation already. So I'm wondering if we can explore ways to communicate about graduation protocol in general that might include this information for those who might be interested and may be appropriate to wear the feathers. So I'm just, I don't know what kind of communication goes out to seniors or to seniors through their schools, and I'm sure each of the principals probably coordinates that, but if there's a way that we can ensure that they have that information, too, and their families have that information, I think it would be important.
Well, we'll definitely be able to, and we did share this that day that we sent out the revised guidance statute on our, the guidance memo back on May 24th. We actually did send that to our native populations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other information from your end? And trustee Kelly, I want to make sure that this covered the information you were looking for in your request for the agenda item as well.
Yeah, it does. I was just kind of curious to see how the graduations were being done, if there had been any changes from my denim before, but also for the new board members that hadn't done these graduations, what they can expect and where to go. So yeah, this covers everything that I was hoping for.
Go ahead.
I would just like to personally thank the Board and Superintendent Davis. I believe last year, we started implementing what Dr. McNeil has on, to signify the importance of graduation. So kudos to all of us and you for that.
And it's warm.
Yes, I would. Vice President Holland?
And to that end, have we heard anything from Jostens about the regalia for board members that have been ordered?
Vanji Russell, for the record, project manager. Yes, I have your gowns upstairs in my office, and I'll bring them down shortly, those of you that ordered them.
So for those that ordered your regalia, and it hasn't, it is here now. It is, and you would be regaling, and that's perfect, because they should be worn at Pacolo. Absolutely want to wear at that graduation on this evening. Just for everyone, in order you'll see throughout the information, thank you for that. You know, we park on the ramp, there's a kind of a green room, if you will, and we can leave our caps and gowns in there, you know, over the course of the 14 remaining graduations that are there. It's a very exciting time, it's a tiring time. I'll attend only the three in my district this year, for obvious reasons, for myself, but make as many as you can. It's the biggest day in the life of so many of these students that are going to walk across the stage and their families. It's just a really great time. It's worth all the fatigue, and Vanji feeds us well, because sometimes we're there all day. We're there all day. But certainly want to encourage, make as many as you can to be there. It's an exciting time.
Cue the music, JJ.
Oh, we do have public comment, then we cue the music. Yes, public comment. Thank you, thank you for the reminder.
I took the music down already, too. Jonathan Lowry?
Mr. Lowry, thank you for returning, sir. You have three minutes.
Hello, thank you for your time. Just real quick, I wanted to read a little report I made up. In regards to this last sentence, "The graduation caps may not be decorated, modified, or otherwise altered, including beading." So this presentation is in regards to the traditional Native American beadwork that is generally placed along the edges of the graduation caps. This is a celebration of various Native American cultures and tribes, and is currently allowed in Carson City School District for graduating seniors, as well as at Primm Lake Junior-Seniary High School. I have contacted the administration from both the district level, as well as the schools themselves, and both have stated that they do allow Native American students to bead their caps. In addition, I've done some research on other neighboring districts and have found out that Fernley High School in Lyon County has an option for the Native American population to have their caps. This is straight from their document. Altered by displaying modest cultural or religious accessories under the following conditions. The accessory is displayed in a respectful manner. The accessory does not distract from the dignity and purpose of the ceremony. Yet, the accessory does not violate Lyon County School District dress code standards. The accessory receives prior approval from the parent, guardian, and school principal 24 hours or more before the graduation ceremony. Processes are in place for neighboring districts, but what is the holdup with Washoe County School District? As a member of the Primm Lake Paiute tribe, I do not believe that it's fair to allow one student who attends another school the choice of getting all of the so-called perks, while another student from the same tribe basically has a wall put up in front of him or her. So myself, I'm a graduate Reed High School from a class of 2005. This document stayed in the eagle feathers and the beadwork. I was told that I could not wear that when I walked. There was another student who was told the same thing, but he still beaded his, and he walked, which was kind of irritating for me and my family. This seemed very disrespectful for me, as I'm a person who was involved in the culture and throughout my years in the Washoe County School District. Teaching others about our culture was always a point of emphasis. I did sing for you guys at your Board of Trustees meeting. The culture's always there, so I'm going to get more into that real quick. I know, RSIC gave a check of $500,000. The Northern Paiute language is a language course that any student can take and receive credit for. There's an education program that's funded to provide educational services, students from Primm Lake, Reno Sparks, and Nevada Urban Indians, yet students are told they can't have beadwork on their caps. It's a simple change that would have a lasting effect on Native American students and families. This would help establish a better relationship between the school district and surrounding Native American communities. Eagle feathers are allowed to be put up on caps or hung from the button on top of the cap, but all Native American students may not understand the meaning or significance in receiving a beaded eagle feather that was properly blessed in sweat or Native American ceremony. I understand the district is trying to keep everything even. If you do one thing for one group, you have to do it for the others.
Mr. Lowry, thank you so much for being here, sir.
That's all I have.
That's all we have in public comment? Okay. Thank you so much. Our graduates leaving, oh, yeah, sorry, that's okay. Trustee Raymond?
Is it too late to add a high school that wasn't on my initial list? It's not too late, okay.
It can come for every graduation.
Okay. Well, I know that there was something about printing the program, so I don't want to make it more...
No, all of our names are in the program.
Okay.
All the trustees are. Yeah, if it comes up and you're available and you didn't think you were going to, just let Vanji know, send her a little email, or give her a little, we're going to go on break here in just a moment, she can give that to you, or anyone else. If at the last minute you find that you're available, come on up. There's plenty of rooms, plenty of chairs on the stage, and it's great to have as many of us there as possible, so certainly want to encourage that. Okay, did I write, signing up for more, yay. Is trustee mayor, oh, that's, okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. We are going to have a, why don't we have a 15-minute break? Yep. Really 15? I usually say 10 because it grows to 15. Let's say a 15-minute break, and come on back. There's no clock on the wall yet. So we'll see you back in 15 minutes. Thank you. Okay, the recess is closed, so we'll get back to the agenda, and we're going to go to Agenda Item 5.04. This is presentation, discussion, and possible action on the performance evaluation from Ms. Paula Ward, chief auditor, Washoe County School District for the 2016-17 school year. This is, again, for possible action. I am down as a presenter, but I'm also going to ask Ms. Ward to join us. And we have a member of our audit committee, Mr. Russ, how do you say your last name?
Ruiz.
Ruiz. Ruiz, Mr. Russ Ruiz, who is here with us, and I also will ask our chief of staff, as a matter of fact, why don't you just kind of start and take us through the process to kind of update the Board on the process? And just for point of information for those board members that may not know, Ms. Ward, who's our chief internal auditor, runs our internal audit department, has been doing so for several years, works directly with the audit committee, that is a committee of this Board, and she is, she is one, is the only other employee outside of the superintendent that has a reporting line to the Board of Trustees. And that's why this, of that, that's, yeah, that's like, yay, that's good news, but then she gets to do her evaluation at a public meeting, which is not so much the good news. But that is why this is being done in this, in this format, because she's an employee of ours. But I think the audit committee has done, they did a really good job of putting some great things together, so we hear that here and act accordingly going forward. So you want to take us through it, if you would, please, David? Thank you, sir.
David Lasik, chief of staff, for the record. So at the May 11th meeting of the audit committee, the sole purpose of that meeting was to design and talk about a process in which to evaluate Ms. Ward. So at that meeting, they settled upon, we presented the central office evaluation, central office administrative evaluation tool to them, and that's what they agreed upon to evaluate Ms. Ward. Each of the audit committee members submitted a ranking, and then each also audit committee member submitted a narrative summary on each of the six standards. So there are six standards in the central office administrative evaluation. Our office compiled each of the rankings and averaged them out to a ranking that's been listed on the draft document before you. And then we compiled each of the statements from each of the audit committee members and put them into one cohesive document, which is also in the narrative of the draft presented before you, with the intent that it speaks from one voice, from the Board of Trustees. And so I don't know if...
No, I would like to ask Mr. Ruiz, because you took the time to come here. Thank you, and thank you for your service to the audit committee, very committed, dedicated member of the committee. Thank you for taking the time to come and just share kind of with the Board. This is the collective voice of the audit committee. I did review it, spoke about it with, because Ms. Ward also reports operationally in the day-to-day to the superintendent. I just had a comment or two, so really, it was really, I thought, a really well-done, really well-done evaluation. So I just wanted the Board to hear from the audit committees, and so thank you for being here to share that voice with us, sir.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to present and provide some perspective. So, you know, I think, in looking at the summary, I think the summary is fairly consistent with my own personal input that was provided, so I wasn't surprised. I think Ms. Ward has a very difficult job to audit the, you know, the members in different groups across the school district, and to maintain independence. So I think that's always a very challenging job, to try and independently look for opportunities where things could be done differently or better. Not everybody enjoys being audited, and so I think that's always challenging. I think, you know, from my personal perspective, and I know other members on the committee, you know, we believe that Ms. Ward is extremely dedicated to doing her job properly, and takes her job very seriously. And I think based on the fiduciary nature of the committee and her team, obviously, that's very important. So I think the way that she goes about doing her job and leading her team is appropriate in trying to identify risk areas where there could be some opportunities to improve or do things differently across the district, given the resources... the district, given the, uh, the resources, um, constraints that, that the school district always has. Um, you know, I think, I think also, um, you know, just like everybody else, there's always opportunities to improve, um, and it's no different for Ms. Ward. I think, um, you know, the input that I've given her personally, and I think came through in here, is, you know, based on the nature of her role, there is a lot of communication required, um, to basically inform stakeholders of, hey, this is what we're doing, why we're doing it, this is why it's important, it's not a, you know, a personal thing against your team or this, this group or whatnot. It's really, you know, trying to have that fiduciary look, uh, independently of, of what's going on in the, in the controls and processes of the district. So, you know, my feedback to her is, on the constructive side, is really, um, you know, make sure that you're having those appropriate dialogues and communicating, you know, frequently and often, depending on whatever the nature of the audit is, um, to make sure that, um, people understand this is why we're, we're doing the work. And so that's, you know, pretty, and I think that's, you know, summarized, uh, you know, as, as in the improvement area, uh, from the collective comments of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. I'd love, would love to hear from you, Ms. Ward. I know that you work really closely with this group, um, they're a very dedicated group, um, and really, um, have the best interests of the district, um, at heart, so please share, share your comments, if you would.
Good afternoon, for the record, Paula Ward, Chief Auditor. Um, I think the evaluation, as, as hard as it is, you know, to come before the public and talk about it, I think there were some great constructive areas, um, and Russ hit it on the, the head, the communication piece is a big area that we continue to strive to work, you know, towards, because people don't like to be audited. I don't mind it, but other people do. So, it's just, um, it's a continuous process, and I think that as we look over the, the past, well, for me, nine years, um, we have improved, you know, there've been areas where, you know, it's, we've kind of fallen short, and, and we look at it, and I just, I, I agree with what was said. I think that, um, I have a great team, and I think we all continue to work towards trying to make our district better, which is the goal of everyone who works here and you as board members. So I appreciate that opportunity that I've been given.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Something else I, I would add is that I, I would just want to commend you for the work that you've done this year. A lot of craziness, up and down, back and forth, all this other stuff, you know, lining up the, uh, you know, appropriate reporting and all of those things, uh, with you and working with the Audit Committee, um, that we've been able to really, it seems like we've been able to find a good place, a good footing, a good way to kind of construct this thing, so that you're independent enough to do what needs to be done, um, because there's a level of independence that you have to have. Um, and your, I mean, your national level of expertise and the, the site reviews that you go on, all of those things that you bring that make us better externally, but also internally. I mean, the work that you've done, um, working with the leadership team and really building, working harder, building trust, working on communication, I mean, that's, you've done a great, this, this, I think it's been a really good year, so I want to publicly come, since you have to be here publicly anyway on this, really just, could really commend you for the, for, you know, for those efforts. Um, it's, it's been, I think it's been a good year. I think it's been a good year.
I just want to say thank you. I'm glad that you're, well, you can go ahead and criticize, too. Criticize isn't the right word, is it?
No, no.
No, constructive.
Yes, construct.
So, but I do appreciate it. I, again, I appreciate this opportunity, and I really do appreciate the Audit Committee and Russ and the dedication that they have in, in making the whole process better. And, and like you said, every time we, we put together a new policy or procedure, you know, we get that much better. At least we know what we're doing, and it's in writing, so that's our goal.
Thank you so much. I see you leaning in, trustee Frankel.
I'm leaning in. Thank you, President Taylor. And I too want to thank you for the work you've done over the last few years. Again, I feel fairly new still, even though I'm one of the more senior members of the board, which always throws me off, uh, but in the two and a half years I've been on the board, I've definitely seen a difference in terms of the information coming to us. And what I've really appreciated, particularly where some of those audit reports that we received, where your staff came with the staff from the department that was, that were the program that was audited. And what really struck me there was that relationship and that, that ability to recognize that even though an audit may not be pleasant for everyone, it is an opportunity for us to think about ways to do what we do better, and, and, because we all can do that. And so I want to thank you for, for your, your commitment to moving that, this process of communication forward and improving it. I've definitely seen a shift, and I, and I note, I want to note that. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Good, yes, trustee mayor. Thank you, trustee Frank.
I would just like to say, you know, it used to be that you'd walk down the hall of the greenhouse and you'd sneak around because you wouldn't, didn't want somebody to grab your arm and talk about an audit. And I can say now, I can walk down the hall with my head held up high, and nobody complains or anything. So if I don't, if you don't get that from staff, everything's going great. And, um, I think, um, the changes that she has made in her committee and her, uh, staff and everything is, is wonderful and marvelous, and I think she deserves the grades she got here. She's just a outstanding person.
Fantastic, thank you, trustee mayor. Then that being said, we're certainly looking for a, a motion if that is the pleasure of the board, based upon information that you've received, the comments from the Audit Committee, um, when, when in from, from, certainly from myself and the rating here, opening it up if that's the pleasure of the board. I see you're like, trustee mayor?
Yes, um, I move to approve, uh, the evaluation that, um, the Audit Committee has forwarded to us, um, on Mrs. Ward and, uh, accept it in the method that it was made, an outstanding evaluation.
I appreciate that, trustee mayor. I'm gonna ask if we can include the NRS on here, because there are a couple of other things that kind of come along with this, which includes a renewing of her contract, and we can do all of that in one fail swoop, if that's okay. It seems to fall in line. Um, so you're, you're open for a kind of a, maybe a restatement that includes that?
Okay, I, I just...
Somebody help him a little bit.
Uh, consistent with Nevada Revised Statute...
Uh-oh. Thank you.
Um, consistent with Nevada Revised Statute 24-1.031, and the current employment agreement, and directs staff to bring a renewal of the current employment agreement to a future meeting of the Board of Trustees for consideration.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and further discussion? Okay, seeing on all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show, it is unanimous, and we're looking forward to just a renewal of that contract at our next meeting, so we can continue moving forward. Thank you so much, for, thank you for your work, Paula. Russ, thank you for being here. Thank you for representing the Audit Committee. We appreciate the work you guys do. You help make us better. Thank you so much, sir. Okay, Agenda Item 5.06, 5.06. This is Discussion and Possible Action for the, yeah, for the Board of Trustees to consider amending or rescinding Item 6.04 of the May 23rd, 2017 Regular Meeting Agenda, specifically the process and rubric to be used for the evaluation of the Washoe County School District Superintendent for the 2016-17 school year, and possible action to provide direction on the selection process for a facilitator slash consultant to conduct the evaluation pursuant to the employment agreement with Ms. Tracy Davis. This is for possible action. And, uh, trustee Frankel, I'm asked if this be, uh, put on the agenda, so we're gonna go directly to her, and then I see Ms. Huckabee's in place as it comes down to looking forward for our consultant or facilitator. So trustee Frankel.
Thank you very much, President Taylor and members of the board. As you all are aware, at our last meeting, we discussed the process, rubric, and facilitator for the 2016-17 Super Event Attendant Evaluation. And actually, I should mention that the comments, I'm reading from my comments, and I, everybody has a copy of what I'm about to share. Toward the end of that dialogue at our last meeting, trustee mayor raised a question about what had happened to the prior work that had already been completed on the evaluation process for this year. At the time, I was somewhat puzzled, but I went ahead with making the motion to use the same rubric for this year's superintendent evaluation as was used for the 2015-16 evaluation. I regret that decision now in light of the fact that we did not have all of the information that we needed before us that day, which is the basis for my request to bring this item back today. The evening following the May 23rd meeting, I was left unsettled by our decision, and in light of trustee mayor's comments, um, with the feeling that I had missed something. And because this is one of our most important responsibilities, I felt like I needed to do my due diligence and begin to do some work, so I immediately began to review the videos of prior board meetings, documents, and history related to the work that we had done last year on the superintendent evaluation process, including requesting transcripts of board policy work sessions that had not been video recorded. Upon reviewing the record and history, I confirmed that Mr. Mayor was right. We had done a great deal of work and decided upon the process, the policies, and the framework for the 16-17 evaluation to align with the balanced governance model the board had adopted. And we had done this work with a paid consultant, Dr. Thomas Alsbury, with whom we had contracted for precisely this purpose. The work with Dr. Alsbury last summer and fall was an important next step in the extensive effort in which the Board of Trustees has been engaged in for several years in the area of affected board governance, and I share some of this history, particularly for the newer board members. That work accelerated tremendously last August and September, under an extended board-approved contract with Dr. Alsbury, as we revised and developed our board policies and processes, including policies and processes regarding the evaluation of the superintendent. Over the course of several meetings last year, the board made some clear decisions on these policies and processes, information that we did not have before us or considered during our discussion of the 2016-17 evaluation process at our last meeting. I had poor recollection of some of this work, as I was unable to attend two of the most important board work policy sessions in September 2016, during which key board decisions were made and direction was given to staff regarding the policy and process for the superintendent's evaluation. Given that I erroneously made the motion to approve the older 2015-16 rubric for this year's evaluation without adequately considering all of this history, prior board action, and information, I felt obligated to request that we revisit this discussion, so we would do our due diligence to provide and review all of the information in order to make the best decision and to do so in a transparent way for the public. Even if we choose to use the older rubric that was presented to us at the last meeting for this year's evaluation, which would mean that we are changing course from prior board action, I believe that we should make that decision in a fully informed, transparent manner, and in a way that leverages all of the work and the financial investment previously, previously made by the board into this process. In light of the fact that there is no staff report provided for this item or for the subsequent related item on today's agenda, and since critical information was missing from the 5/23, um, the May 23rd Agenda Item, I took it upon myself to put together materials that will enable us to have this discussion and make the best decision in the most transparent way. Let me walk through what the packet that you've been given, um, contains. Handout A is a staff report for the Agenda Item 6.04 from our last meeting on May 23rd, and handout B is the document that was provided to us in that report as reference for that discussion, specifically the rubric that was developed by staff and trustees, and thanks to Vanji Russell for her coordination of that, for the 2015-16 evaluation. Given that we may be reconsidering that decision here today, and it was agendized to do so, I felt it appropriate to have this document available to us, again, here today. You will note that none of the background information or dates of prior board action related to the work of the balanced governance policies, including the superintendent evaluation process and framework, were identified on the Agenda Item that we had before us that day, which is why I'm providing some of it here today. Handout C is the staff report for the Agenda Item from August 9th, 2016, regular Board of Trustees meeting, where we approved our contract with Dr. Alsbury. At that meeting, the board had been provided two possible options for a contract with Dr. Alsbury, and ultimately approved Contract Option A, entitled Washoe County School District Balanced Governance Superintendent Evaluation Proposal, which I have attached to the Agenda Item with handout C. The board decided on that contract option specifically so that we would undertake an expedited timeline that would align with the calendaring requirements outlined in the superintendent's contract, and in order to assist the new board, as they came on this year, in being fully prepared to use the new process for this year's evaluation. From a review of the contract with Dr. Alsbury, you will find a timeline that envisioned meetings with the board to develop and approve the balanced governance policies, process, and framework, most importantly, the policy and process regarding the superintendent's evaluation, a staff training work session in December with Dr. Alsbury on procedures necessary to implement all of the new policies, new board member orientation, and a board work session with the superintendent in February to clarify the data, evidence, and artifacts that would be used in the superintendent's evaluation process. Again, the approved timeline identified that the work would be completed with sufficient time to undertake, to use it for this year's evaluation. Handout D contains copies of staff reports for board meeting Agenda Items from the subsequent board meetings in Sep-, in 2016, during which policy and process for the superintendent's evaluation were discussed, and during which board action was taken, including the following: the August 26th, 2016 Initial Work Session with Dr. Alsbury, where we discussed our balanced governance policies and the superintendent evaluation process; the board work sessions of September 15th and 16th of 2016 with Dr. Alsbury, which were noticed as board policy meetings, at which the board approved forwarding the policies and processes to a future board meeting. It should be noted that at the September 16th Board Policy Work Session, the board decided to include the Evaluation Manual from Balanced Governance Framework as an appendix to Board Policy 9081. At the time, it was numbered 9007.1, but the numbering was changed when it was finally approved by the board. The policy is Formative Monitoring of the Superintendent and Strategic Goals, which I have attached as handout F, and provide a direction to staff to use the Balanced Governance Evaluation Framework as our procedure. The September 27th, 2016 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting Agenda Item was where the board preliminarily approved all of the revised and approved policies from the September 15th-16 Policy Work Session, and reiterated board direction to staff that the Balanced Governance Evaluation Framework, while not included in Policy 9081, would be used as procedure. Finally, the October 25th, 2016 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting, where all of the policies aligned with the Balanced Governance Framework were ultimately approved by the board. Handout E is the staff report for October 11th, 2016, regular board meeting, the Agenda Item in which the board approved using the previously developed rubric for the 2015-16 evaluation. Again, the rubric that I've provided today is handout B, and that we were provided at our last meeting on May 23rd. During that October 11th meeting, um, and that board discussion, it was clarified that the older rubric would be used solely for 2015-16, for the superintendent evaluation, and that the board had already approved using the Balanced Governance Evaluation Framework for the 2016-17 evaluation. And as mentioned previously, handout F is Current Policy 9081, Formative Monitoring of the Superintendent and Strategic Goals, which is, provides the overarching governance for this process. And handout G is the Superintendent Balanced Governance Evaluation Manual, as approved by the board as an appendix to Board Policy 9081, which includes the Evaluation Framework or Rubric as developed by the board and which staff was directed to use as procedure. I know that's a lot of information, but in summary, and we can review that if we move forward with, with this item, in summary, valuable history, information about prior board action, and documents were not provided to or considered by our board at our last meeting, when we discussed the process, rubric, and facilitator for the 2016-17 Superintendent Evaluation. Again, it is very important for us to have all this history and this information in order to make the best, most transparent, and fully informed decision about this year's evaluation, and to leverage the time, work, and financial investment previously committed to this process by the staff and the board. So I'm ready to move that the Board of Trustees reopen the discussion and consider amending the action item on Item 6.04 from the May 23rd-17 Regular Meeting Agenda regarding the process, rubric, and facilitator for the 2016-17 Evaluation of the School District Superintendent.
Okay, so is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I want to make it this time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been moved and seconded, that the Board of Trustees reopens the discussion to, uh, and consider amending the action. So reopen the discussion on which evaluation rubric we're using for the, I'll make sure I get it right.
On the decision, well, however I said it, I tried to say it as, as Neil had...
Yeah, it's probably, probably in line with this. I just want to make sure I get it right.
Yeah.
So that the, that the, that the board reopened the discussion and consider amending the action, taking on Agenda Item 6.04, which was the rubric from last, the one, from the last meeting, 6.04 from last meeting, um, regarding the process, the rubric, and the facilitator for the 2016-17 evaluation. So let me, let me try to say this in the, in plain terms and make sure, make sure I understand it, and, and everyone else, that, um, so, so the motion is to, let's go back, we voted last time to accept the rubric, the process, and, 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 and hire a facilitator or consultant, and you're saying, hey, let's go back and reconsider that, because we have this other information that wasn't shared at that time? In a nutshell?
In a nutshell, and I was instructed by a legal counsel that this would be the important step to take prior to actually moving to item 5.07, should we approve?
Right, we had to do this first, before that, yeah. Okay, okay, so the motion on the floor is to go back and to say, we want to reconsider the evaluation item, which is item 6.04 from the last meeting. That has been moved, it has been seconded. Is there more discussion now?
I have.
I'm in line? Yes, Dr. Feenster?
Maybe I'm missing a piece.
Okay.
What you're looking for is a discussion about a new process that we would evaluate the superintendent on?
What I wanted to bring forward is that we had, we've done a lot of work, as trustee mayor mentioned at the last meeting, a great deal of work on the evaluation process, including developing a new framework, a rubric, and so that we should look at that. My suggestion would be to look at that as we consider what approach we want to use for this year, because the work has already gone into it, and we've worked very, we worked very hard, and the previous board was very committed to moving that process forward, as I mentioned. So it's essentially to make sure we consider all of the information and the work that had been done, and then make a decision with all that in mind.
So is that the tool that Vanjie developed?
No, it's actually the tool that's at the end, it's handout G in the of the packet, it's a different rubric, and I mean, Vanjie can explain it, but I, because I worked with trustee Taylor and Vanjie.
Yeah, Ian David was in that, I think he came up to help.
Yeah, so you can explain how the differences of that. So.
Maybe I can clarify something before we go forward.
Yeah, something's missing.
The appendix, Superintendent's Balanced Governance Evaluation Manual, was never approved. I pulled the transcripts from that meeting, I read them very carefully, that this evaluation manual was not approved by the prior Board of Trustees. So I just want to make sure that's clear for the record. There was a lot of work around the evaluation, but the old board did not want to commit the new board to a particular evaluation process that had already been developed.
And if I may add a little bit of clarity, first of all, I wouldn't say trustee Franco was right in that a lot of work was done with Dr. Tom Alsberry with the balanced governance model, if you will, in terms of going forward and evaluating superintendent. Some of the other things that actually were kind of part of this, but not a part of the evaluation, had to do with assessments that we take along the way during the year, you know, all of those things, so that we're doing it not towards all at the end, but kind of doing those assessments along the way in a formative way. And so the conversation, we had a very lengthy, we'd gone through our training on balanced governance, which you were all introduced to, and the new trustees were introduced to during your orientation. We'd gone through that, and the board did a lot of work, we talked about the rubric and so on, and actually during that work section, during that work session, as I recall, there was some hesitation as to whether or not that rubric would have been adopted during that work session. And then so, and then in moving forward, God bless you, and then in moving forward, as it got later and later in the calendar year last year, and we started getting more towards September and October around that time, and it was obvious that we were going to have four new board members. At that point, in this one, we were talking about, when do we put this on the agenda when we have our agenda review meetings and so on? That's when three things really came up. One was Superintendent Davis mentioned, and she had mentioned it before during the work session, that she had some questions and concerns about the process, she wanted to do more follow-up, and part of her contract says that she agrees with the process, so we do this thing together. The second thing was, I mentioned that as we got later and later, and now we're going to have, as we got later and later, we're going to have new board members come in in January to do a new evaluation process on something called balanced governance that they hadn't even been introduced to yet, and so it kind of tied their hands going forward. I actually shared that with Tom Alsberry, he agreed with that as well. And then the third thing was the training that we had originally approved that Dr. Alsberry would do, would train the staff in December, which is about halfway through the evaluation year, and then train the board in February, which is more than halfway through the evaluation year, on an evaluation process. So those are my concerns, and I remember sharing those concerns, I actually called Tom to have a conversation with him about them, after I'd had a meeting, whatever our regular meetings were, and she had been expressing some concerns, I had those concerns, and in fact, I recall very, very clearly that Tom agreed, that not that we would lose it because that was important work that would be done, but we would let this board decide how they wanted to do the, because we have four new board members. And at that point, we had just finished our evaluation process for the 15-16 school year, and that's when trustee mayor was saying, why don't we just do this for one more year? And so that's where that landed. So it hasn't been erased, it hasn't been wasted, it's been this board with four new board members should decide what that evaluation process should look like. So that's kind of what happened in that process, because otherwise, we have people evaluating on a new process that's more than halfway through the school year. And so that's where that kind of landed, if you will. And that, and quite honestly to me, is not us doing our best work as a board and evaluating someone and creating, and adopting and implementing a new process that far into the year, which is so new to so many people, so. If I can add that clarity.
And what I'll say is, I share your concern about doing this right, and I want to do it the right way, and it seems like there's differences of perspective on what the intent and the direction of the board last fall was. We have new board transitions all the time. My recollection is different than what I'm hearing today, and so what I'm actually going to suggest is that we need to get to the bottom of kind of what happened with all of this work, because this work was done over eight months ago, and a lot of decisions, including board policy decisions related to that, were made in the fall. So I'm going to suggest that we do an inquiry into what happened with this work, because we're in June, and I guess I'll look to Neil and say, how do we make that happen, Neil?
Well, you want to do an inquiry? Well, I don't think you can under this agenda item, I mean, the way it's agendized right now, or noticed on the agenda right now, I think what we have to decide right now is whether or not we want to reconsider to amend the past action, and that's what this discussion should stick to, and I understand that there's overlap between the two, 5.05 and 5.06. Is that right?
You know, I appreciate that, actually, it makes a lot of sense, Neil. I think that the immediate decision is about how we want to proceed right now.
Yeah, right.
And I can make the request when we get to board reports to.
I think that's the best way to do it.
Thank you.
Yes, trustee Holland?
I guess one of the questions I would have is, is there a substantive difference that, between the 15-16 rubric and what was produced and apparently not acted upon as the 16-17 and going forward balanced governance? Because if there's a substantive difference, we have an issue we've got to deal with. But if there's not a huge difference, I just, and I absolutely respect that we want to follow through on all of this work that was done, and we're in June, and this poor woman has to be evaluated on something that could potentially change at this point in the year. I think it's not, I think that's not appropriate. So I just, I would want to know just globally, how big is the difference between what we voted last time? And I appreciate that you brought all of this forward, I do appreciate that, trustee Franco.
I think in the packet, we have both rubrics, am I right?
Yeah, but I just. Well, and I think, and again, when you asked me the same question, what specific changes would I suggest, and I actually said, I'm not going to speak for the board, I think the board needs to have a discussion with all of the information and history available, which was my point in bringing this agenda item back. So that question is probably better suited for the second agenda item, which is what are the differences between the two rubrics, and how are they?
If we reconsider.
If we reconsider.
Got you. So really, we're back to then, do we reconsider? And I added the information from a background standpoint to share more because I was at all the meetings, and I do remember the reason why there was a delay, and the reason why there was a delay was because of the reasons that I shared. And that, you know, that I still feel strongly about, just because I think, I don't think it's fair to change somebody's evaluation process halfway through the year, and to adopt at that point. If we put that part aside and go to what trustee Holland has said, to change it now in June, you know, would be a little more troubling, quite frankly, at this point in terms of being, you know, from a fairness standpoint. Not to go without saying that, then what did happen? If there's some misinformation on what happened, we should clear that up. I think that would absolutely be appropriate to do, but I think that regardless of that, to change in June when there's less than a month away left in an evaluation period, I would really hesitate to do that, just out of fairness to any employee. Trustee mayor, I see you, and then I see Dr. Feenster.
I'm going to vote against this motion mainly on the basis of fairness. She's supposed to be in on any changes that we make. If we reconsider to do another rubrics, it's going to take us negotiation time, time to fill this, it's, you're not going to get it done by the end of September, believe me. I was in all those meetings, and I feel that this, to use this rubric for this year that's all but the summer left is the way to go, and then have committees and form new rubrics and new evaluation process and everything, but to change it in the middle of the stream is not fair. It's not fair in anything you do without warning or without consideration to her on, oh, hey, we're going to do a new evaluation, and we're going to do it in a fast track on three months, and we're going to do a new rubric and everything, where we have an opportunity to do a complete redo of the rubric, if that's what's on people's minds, and then she's part of the discussion, and we come up with one, and then we approve that for the next fiscal year. I think it's only fair, and I really, really feel that that's the only way to vote, that's the way I'm going to vote.
Thank you, trustee mayor, Dr. Feenster.
I listened to what trustee Holland said, and it had a lot of merit to it. Looking at the additional rubrics, whatever we're missing, looking at that, and is there something in there that would substantially, you know, make a difference in a month or two? Maybe we can look at another way, look at another way of adding this to the evaluation. I got to tell you, as a principal, if I were to do this to a teacher, I would be remiss in my responsibility, and I would not want to do that, because, but there is a way I see to add to the evaluation, if it's something that we all agree on as a board, that maybe we missed one piece out of that rubric that really can make a difference in the growth of the superintendent, the growth of the board, because I think it's a two-way street. I think we're here as a team, even though I know it's the superintendent's evaluation. I think if we all agreed that maybe just one area that we need to look at, because that's the way I would do it as a principal, I would not want to change something on a teacher in March. I would be remiss in everything I was hired to do, especially if they've worked the entire year, and, you know, we, first of all, is neglect, not bringing it to the teacher's attention ahead of time, that, hey, listen, here's an area that you're kind of slacking off on, or maybe you're missing in your daily execution of your lesson plans or your instructional method. To ask them that in June, or in, let's say, wait, they're due in April, in March, I wouldn't even feel right doing the evaluation. I would have to bring that to that teacher, I would imagine, hopefully in October, I wouldn't want to catch it, but to, you know, so that we can monitor that, so that I can provide feedback. So I, I'm just wondering if it's like Katie, trustee, the vice president, Holland mentioned. Is there some, how did you say that about the rubric?
Well, my comment, Madam President, was just, since I'm seeing this for the first time, I don't know whether there's a substantial difference, but, and again, as trustee mayor pointed out, even if there is, and we wanted to add something, it really, as you said, it sort of, it abdicates our responsibility to have been working on that throughout the time that we've been trustees. And certainly, from a process standpoint, we have a meeting June 23rd, we don't meet again until July 25th. I mean, we don't have time to have a back and forth for the superintendent to say, well, I agree with this, but not with this. So, anyway, and I know trustee Raymond wants to make a comment as well.
Please go, thank you, trustee Holland and Dr. Feenster.
Well, I appreciate the amount of time and work you spent on this, you know, I think it is important to have this conversation. I didn't obviously go back and re-watch last meeting, and my memory of it, and I think this is, you know, an example of how we all can remember things in different ways and different parts of the meeting, and there were a lot of details in that last meeting about both this process, but then also our future work with Dr. Alsberry. And my memory of that meeting was, I thought we did talk about some of this work having been started, but not moved forward with, and that we were going to revisit it with Dr. Alsberry, and, but I'm not sure if that was this, or if that was the board evaluation part of it, but I think regardless, I feel like I was looking forward to the opportunity as a new trustee with four years, hopefully, left on my term, to work on an evaluation that I feel good about for the next four years, and I could see that being this, or I could see it being some combination of what we have worked with, but I would hate to be in a rush to push something through at the end of this year when, you know, I think we are all eager to really get to work on what next year's might look like, and with Dr. Alsberry. And I know terms change, and the timing isn't ever perfect, but I do feel like we kind of have a good window right now before the next group comes on, so.
I just want to add that may, are you going to comment to?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead, trustee Franco.
And I just wanted to just clarify, because of all the comments that I just heard, I'm not advocating for the, to use right now for this year, this rubric. I wanted to make sure it was on the record, because there has been no record of additional board action since October 25th of last year. So I think, as you said, trustee Raymond, that it was important for us to have this dialogue here today, to acknowledge and to see the work that was done before, and yes, to make the decision we need to make in light of the time we're at, but I felt like we needed to at least revisit it, only to do the due diligence and acknowledge work that we had done before. So again, I'm not advocating for changing the rubric, that's not, I said that to Neil when I asked for this agenda item. I wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to correct the record, is basically, because we did not have all the information before us, and that was my primary purpose.
Thank you, trustee Franco. The thing that I was just going to add is, in the, to go with what trustee Raymond said, part of the conversation as we look forward, as you'll recall from our last board meeting, was a conversation around goals and what that looks like as well, which is not really present in either of these rubrics, quite frankly. So as we go forward, the conversation, as you said, was, hey, let's take a look at whether we really want this thing to look like, so it gives us the best evaluation tool, and even looking at that differently. I think those comments are part of the reason why it made sense to me to, we're going to get some other input, and might want to look at this thing completely differently, and because we have some different ideas that have been shared, which again, began with, I never thought about looking at the goals differently until you shared that, which certainly makes sense, and we want to make room for that. I think that's important, so it may end up being, as we go forward to 17-18, it may not be either of these rubrics, or maybe some hybrid thereof, because of the other ideas of the new board members that are here, so. Yes, trustee Holland?
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to thank you for all of this work you put into this, and it is important for us all to note that together, we did not accomplish several of the tasks that were laid out to be done, and there were three meetings proposed that we didn't have, so, by Dr. Alsberry. So I think, from my perspective, one of the things that I would like to have us have a dialogue about is possibly a calendar for the year that we would do, and it's not down to dates, but down to months, that in this month, we need to do this, and in this month, we need to do this, so that we do not get here without these things having been completed in a timely manner. And I think we all share that responsibility, it's not just on staff, and it's not just on the board or the president. We all share that responsibility to make sure that we have a thoughtful and strategic, systematic, timely way of getting to these tasks in the order that they need to be done. So I'd like to just maybe have that suggested to come back as a part of what we do when we look at 17-18 and beyond.
And I think that, I would agree with that, and I think that was part of the conversation around the formative assessments as well, and different things that come back during different, I think it was just by the month, I don't know if it was, but it was by the month, right? I think it was that type of thinking. It was all, so that was part of our work session, right? And it was connected to the superintendent's evaluation process, so that's how all of that kind of got paused, I guess, if you will. But that was, in my opinion, that was part of the conversation, so I do think that that would be important, to make sure that those important things that are supposed to happen should happen. So what we ended up doing this year was doing board reports for two days, and what we, and the conversation before was, hey, let's have them, let's spread those out instead of having two days of board reports, but again, having so many new board members, we wanted all the new board members to get, because we brought up to speed, because it's connected to the strategic planning, anyway, and all of that. So that's, I think that's work that would serve us well, moving forward and looking at what should be happening for all of those things, whether it's a strategic plan, whether it's a budget, whether it's the evaluation, whether... whether it's the strategic plan, whether it's the budget, whether it's the evaluation, whether it's how we move forward as a board. All those things would just make us work better, so, so thank you for that. Yes, Trustee Mayor.
I'm going to vote no on this, but with the caveat that we'll start in July on evaluations for next year. And I want to ask the board, self-evaluation, so that we can work on two rubrics, if you will. Her evaluation on our own. We did one one time, it was love and kisses, you know.
Your mic's going on and off, sir.
Down and off evaluation of ourselves along with the, and we'll start in July or August doing that.
And I do believe that, that we've, we've talked about that, and actually, the last meeting, we approved a new proposal, because since we didn't have Dr. Alsberry train the board on the new process in February, we changed that to be a self-evaluation that we will do this summer. So, that, that's already beginning to happen, so it reinforces that. So, there is a motion on the floor. As you, as you recall, the motion on the floor is to reconsider, is to, is to consider amending or rescinding Agenda Item 6.04 from our last meeting. It was seconded, so we will have a vote at this time. All of them in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye. Okay, any opposition? No? Okay, the motion, okay, let me make it clear. The motion is to, is to consider rescinding or reconsidering the, what we, the action we took place, the action we put in place last meeting. Last meeting, the action we put in place was the process and the rubric for the superintendent's evaluation. The motion on the floor is, "Hey, let's go back and reconsider that."
And it was the, the rubric for this, to be used for the 16, 17 school year?
Yes, just 16, 17. Yes, thank you. We had to make that clear last time, too. So, the motion on the floor, because the way we have it right now, we have agreed upon for 16, 17, we're going to use the same rubric we used in the previous year. We're going to have a consultant or facilitator come in, and that's why Chief HR Officer is sitting there. That's what we approved upon, that's where we are. The motion on the floor is, "Hey, let's go back and reconsider that. Let's, let's go back and, and consider changing or amending that and doing something different." Did I, did I explain that before? 16, 17. Yes. Okay, so now we'll try this again. Did I get that?
You did get it, but we need to call for public comment. This is an action item.
Okay, thank you. Is there, is there public comment? Okay, Sina, thank you. A hand? Okay, okay. Did I, did I get that? I got that, right? It's your motion, so I want to make sure I got that right. Okay. All right, so, so, yes, Dr. Feenster?
I could assure you, I'm not clear.
Okay, so let me say it again. That's okay, we want everyone to be clear.
I just want to make sure that I'm... Maybe it's the years that I'm...
That's okay, let me, let me make it clear.
The years, too.
Okay, so where we are, right, it's important to say where we are now, because the motion is about going back to reconsider it. Where we are now, Agenda Item 6.04, that we, that we took action on and approved at a meeting two weeks ago, approved the rubric, the process, and that we will give a facilitator consultant for the 16, 17 superintendent's, superintendent's evaluation. We approved that. Okay, that's where we are now. Okay, so the agenda item before us today is, do we want to go back and reconsider that and say, "Maybe we want to do something different?"
At this late date?
Yeah, that's your commentary. That's your commentary.
That's what I have to add, to understand.
Yeah, so if that's what you need to have, that's fine. So, what's on, what we're, what we're talking about now is, do we want to go back and take another look in light of there's been some other work done and so on and so forth, that Trustee Frankel has brought forward, reminded us of, I guess I should say? Do we want to go back and take a look at that and say, "Maybe we want to, maybe we want to do that differently"? That's the motion. So, yes, vote, yes, we'd like to go back and reconsider 6.04.
Let, let me just, let me just restate, because essentially, the reason that I'm doing this isn't so much to go in a different direction. It is so that we have the conversation that we had two weeks ago, once again, with the right information in front of us. That's the reason for the motion. So, it's not necessarily to change the decision, it's to make a decision fully informed with all the information in front of us.
Okay, does that clear?
Let me just ask a question.
Okay.
So, we're missing some information, that's what you're saying?
And that's the information she shared with us today, right?
I'm saying that we didn't have it before us, and we made the decision last time.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so we will take, we do need a hand vote? Right? Chief Legal, we lack a hand vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion to reconsider, to, 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 to perhaps amend, perhaps amend, to at least have a different discussion, not to use it, because it means something different, right? But all those in favor of the motion to reconsider, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion is defeated six to one. Okay, so, so that would mean, so that would mean that Agenda Item 6.07 is just, is moot. Okay, do we just call that moot? Neil, Neil, excuse me, do we? Isn't that what this, that what this is?
Five point zero seven.
It's just moot, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I called it correctly. All right, so that, that is moot, so now we're on to Agenda Item 5.08. Six point... Oh, six, oh, okay, I got, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I was going to say, where I don't see that, okay, yeah. But the closing item, 6.01. Okay, gotcha. All right, so, okay, 6.01.
Thank you, Madam President. On recommendation of legal counsel, I'd like to request a policy committee agenda item to discuss a process whereby the superintendent and/or other staff can correct or respond to statements made in public comment.
Okay, so we have an agenda item for that? All right. Yes?
Yes, and it was what I said before, I'd like to, an inquiry to look into kind of where the decisions were made and how, how the information was used and, and the work that was done last year. And just, just to get, get clear on all of that, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Since we're going to be moving forward with work, additional work going forward, I think we should know clearly where we were and what the intent and decisions were by the board. So, I'm going to ask for that kind of, that inquiry.
And that would be appropriate as we begin to work on the next year's evaluation, anyway, you should be rather along a part of that. Okay, other, yes, Trustee Holland?
I had a great suggestion from a member of the community, that I'd, I'd like to ask for us to have an agenda item to discuss board input on, on guiding principles for new school design. Not so much the specs, but things like, you know, flexibility, and whether we want to have sites be able to have input into specific design. I just, I'm not familiar enough with that process, and I'd love to have the board actually be able to sort of set the philosophical approach based on input from staff and others that are working on those things, so.
I want to make sure I'm clear, so an agenda item on just what you said, guiding principles, help me?
Yes, guiding principles for new school design, so that we, you know, if, if safety is the number one thing we're going to look at, we'll have that be discussed. Or if we want to have a balance between issues that regard safety and issues that regard educational imperatives in 21st century...
Or maybe bean grain, or...
Exactly, so that the board can actually set some principles and parameters and have that discussion.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Holland. Trustee Mayor?
That's a great idea, and they have what's called an architectural committee that comes up with the designs and everything. But in light of what she's saying, I think not only principals, but teachers and classified people have input to that, um, design committee, I think they call it, architectural design committee. Because, you know, it's a shame that these schools, elementary schools, don't have wider windowsill to grow pen ants on. And I'm sure if they had the committee, they'd say, "Oh, all elementary teachers would like to watch, watch bean, plants grow and everything." And they have never asked teachers and principals for input.
So...
Okay, so I'm going to ask that the board not discuss it any further, because, because it's not an action item, and now we have two members, so we're getting close to creating...
Okay, so basically, we go back to what you said. Sign on that, okay. Got you. You have your live on, Trustee Frankel, did you have a comment?
Nope, it's not on display, is it?
Okay, any, any other, any other, any other future agenda items, anyone? Okay, Sina, any, any public comment?
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, my name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher, and I have three kids in the district. Just to bring the four new board members up to date on what I was talking about a few minutes ago. Last year, the meeting to substantially change Incline High School into the first one-to-one high school in the district was a private meeting, because some people raised funds for the devices. Some people on this board, and at the time running for this board, did not agree with the private meeting, and thought parents should be included. Superintendent Davis disagreed and supported the private meeting. Superintendent Davis, the deputy superintendent, and several other top district officials, all, and selected invited parties were present. Absent were the high school parents. The one-to-one program was implemented in a private meeting without input from the faculty, and I have emails from faculty members that state that, that didn't come from me. In my opinion, and for maybe $150,000 worth of laptops and professional development, Superintendent Davis allowed these people to totally change our high school. More than that, it empowered them to create a possible anonymous petition. They won't sign it. No one seems to know who from the district supported and/or signed the possible anonymous petition. To date, inclined parents have never had a chance to discuss all the aspects of the one-to-one program and third-party vendors in our schools. There are several things parents should have been able to discuss in advance, like the current student data breach that just happened at Edmodo. How do we deal with data breaches? One of the biggest issues are the profiles these third-party vendors like Edmodo and Google will be creating on our children. I have another handout. Both the political left and right have written about how these profiles may affect the future of our children. Three, how difficult is it for students not taking one-to-one devices or logging into third-party vendors to complete all their high school work at Incline High? And four, things like the Time article from August 2016 titled, "Screens in School: The $60 Billion Hoax." The people empowered by the private meetings and pushing the one-to-one program are making it almost impossible for students to get through high school without spending hours per week on the internet and using an Edmodo account. Now that it sounds like our current principal may be leaving, I would like it noted for the record that our current vice principal is probably one of the biggest obstacles us parents have in trying to learn about the one-to-one program. In fact, one day, he told me publicly in front of at least two other parents with concerns about the one-to-one program, "Find another high school," end quote. Most people know by now that's not going to be happening. I think the superintendent and district have created a very combative environment...
Mr. Appolito, your time is up, sir.
...for a few of us parents at Incline High School.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Any other public comment? Ms. JJ? Okay, seeing no other public comment, then our next meeting is on January, uh, January 23rd, June 23rd. But between now and the end, a lot of graduations.
I'm sorry.
27th? Is it? It's two weeks from today, three weeks from today. Three weeks from today. Yes, Dr. Feenster? Will you turn your mic on, please, ma'am? Thank you.
I truly want to thank everyone who was involved with the state legislature and the decisions that they had to make on our behalf. The entire Washoe County School District benefited from this decision, and you guys did an excellent job. You're, the entire team, from David to Kristen and Tracy, every single person, school board members, whoever presented. I have to say that Dottie Merrill even mentioned you by name, Angie, when you went down and presented to our committee, and it really made us feel proud that you were there. And she said you guys made a difference. So, thank you, guys, whoever went down there to speak on our behalf. Thank you so much. Phenomenal job, and it paid off. I mean, talk about minute by minute. That's what it was, and you know what? It all paid off. So, thanks to everyone for your time, your just selflessness. It was just all about the students, and I think that showed. So, we are definitely a team, and we are showing that we do care about kids. I appreciate when we have Veronica on the phone and, and our meeting, we had a meeting, and just the fact that we were willing to stick together as a team. So, I want to thank everyone, because it made a difference, and I think everyone knows that we're, you know, we're a strong team, and we are about kids. Thank you so much for your leadership, everyone, especially your team, Tracy, if you can convey that to them, because they're not, most of them are not here. But please let them know that I appreciate everything that they've done, and I'm sure every single board member appreciates what they've done. So, thank you so much for your leadership, and thanks for the team. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Feenster. Thank the governor and the legislators down there, especially those that really came together and that were concerned about formulas and what happened here in the Washoe County School District and other districts, really making some tough decisions, difficult negotiations for kids. So, without the governor's support and leadership, his team in the, so really, we need to be a big, big thank you to our northern legislators and the governor for their work as well, that allowed the work to be so fruitful that happened here in the district. So, we certainly want to go on record and thank them. I meant to say that earlier, and I forgot, so thank you. Thank you, everyone, our meeting is adjourned. Pacollo, 6:00 PM, roving up.